Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of March the 27th. The clock on the wall says 6:30, so we'll get going here. I'll call it to order. Madam Clark, would you do the vote call for us?
Okay, Mr. Shilin.
President.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
President.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Schuberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
President.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Seven councilmembers present, one absent.
Very good. Thank you. If you will rise with me. Pastor Bruce Wade is with us, and he'll lead us in the invocation. Thank you again, Pastor.
Praise be, sir. Heavenly Father, we rejoice and give you thanks for the blessings of this day and for the privilege we have to live in the community that we live and have these public servants that lead us. I pray for this session tonight, for our mayor and councilpersons, and all the administrators and those that lead departments within this city. Especially, Lord, do I lift up the boots on the ground that help us every day, on every street, every byway in our community. I want to pray for our public safety officers, both the police department and fire, and all of those that meet with us when we're hurt or sick or when we have a problem. I pray for our neighbors, Lord, in Atchison, in Macon, and in Randolph County that are recovering from excessive rainfall yesterday. We ask your blessings on them, and for those that are inconvenienced and under floodwaters. And I pray, Lord, for the emergency services in those communities, the working around the clock to help their neighbors and their friends. We pray, Lord, tonight, that you continue to bless those within our city family who need your daily and perpetual care. That surely would include but not be limited to Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shilin, Mr. Moore, Chief Myers, and any and all others that are part of the city family. I want to thank you for what you did for Jaco Bowman, longtime solid waste driver. I'm grateful, Lord, that he's out and about now, and we consider that a miracle. Thank you for your love and watch care over us, God, and direct us through this holy week and celebration of Easter, and bless our families and all those we share life with and love. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
At the beginning of every council meeting, we've set aside a time for anyone who would like to share with the council a concern of the operation of the city or any particular facet of the city that you'd like to share with or that you have a concern. Or anything good. So either way, it doesn't always have to be negative. So at this time, anyone who's not on the agenda, who's present, would like to address the council, or the council will not interact, but we will be glad to take your testimony. And if you'd please come forward at this time, give us your name and your address, and limit your comments to no longer than five minutes. We appreciate that. Anyone present who'd like to address the council. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with the agenda. Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight includes the council minutes from the March 13th meeting, the acceptance of the Director of Administration report, an event request from the Foundation for Suicide Prevention for Out of Darkness Walk on April the 14th, an event request, again, from the Foundation for Suicide Prevention for a Car and Truck Show that's going to be held in Veterans Park on June the 9th. And then we also have a Card V request to close Fifth Street between Market and Court Street for a Take Back the Night event. And then we also have acceptance of the following board and commission reports, Historic Preservation Public Utilities Board, Public Utility Board from February. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the councilperson would like to remove and individually consider?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove the two items from the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. It does appear that we have some visitors with us this evening, and I give them the opportunity to address the council individually.
Very good.
And I would like to remove the approval of the event request for Card V from April 10th for the discussion. I have concerns about the street closure.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else they'd like to remove?
Motion to approve all other items in the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, second, to approve the consent, those items that are left on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Now we will consider those items that were on the consent agenda that we just removed. We'll take them in order. We'll do item C first. This is the Out of Darkness Walk, which is scheduled for April the 14th. Do we have folks that'd like to address us on this? Please come forward at this time. And if you also are here for the...
Yep, I'm here for both of them.
For the Car and Truck Show, let's do them both.
Both of them.
Okay.
Thank you. This is our first year for the campus walk. It's actually Cleo and Ashley are doing it as a class project, so that's the reason I kind of wanted to come up and show them what we do.
I see. Great.
So we're just going to take the route that we showed you guys in the packet. We're going to go from Weemood's down to Westminster through the back, come down Westminster, Fifth Street, Fifth Street to Nichols, and back into the campus. We'll have traffic control at Ninth Street because it's not a four-way stop. So we'll have some traffic control. And I talked to Chief Myers about it. We've always handled our traffic control and stuff and done real well with it when we do our walks, so.
Oh, excellent. I hope it's a good event. Are there any questions? Of these folks on this event? Do I have a motion to approve the event?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion, second, to approve the Out of Darkness Walk on April the 14th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Looks like we'll have that walk. That's good. Now we're going to do June the 9th. Do you want to go ahead with that?
June the 9th is the city park, and we're wanting to see if you guys waive the cost of the living rental, since we're non-for-profit.
It's been the position that most of the events that do rent and utilize the park are non-for-profit, and we historically have denied waiving the fees.
That's fine.
Is there a reason? Why do we deny? I mean, it's non-for-profit. Why do they have to pay?
Because there are additional costs associated for us with the event.
And this can't come out of our general revenue or anything?
It could.
Maybe we should consider that. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, I have a comment. Mrs. Gray, I'll tell you a few years why that came back, because I was one of the council members who said that everybody should pay, because I got in the argument, well, there's no use to have a fee for citizens. They are taxpayers. When we donate it free to every non-for-profit comes along, there was a time when we just didn't have no revenue from it. So we have to support it in many ways, just size the tax dollars, so that's why we agreed that everybody paid for a shelter or something.
Well, I would think if they cleaned up after theirsself, and there's nothing for the city employees to go and pick up after them, and if you do any damages, then you pay for those damages.
We're insured.
Yeah.
We have insurance, too. We cover our insurance on every event we have. We have a million-dollar policy on that.
And the other thing is, if we do it for one, you know, where does it stop? And, you know, a lot of things are great and others are, you know, some of us may not even agree with, so you kind of have to try to treat everybody equally. I mean, how much are we talking for this fee?
Thirty-eight.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars. Yeah. So I'm sure they'll accept donations.
I'll give it to them. That's not a problem, because if you listen to the news, this suicide with teenagers is outrageous. So I'm all in favor of what you're doing.
We cover 53 counties here in State Reserve, too. We think I could just cover Calaway. So we're actually starting to walk in Joplin September 29th this year, so I'll do their first walk.
Very good. Thank you for what you do. Any other questions, Connie? Open the floor for motions.
What's... Your name Cleo?
Chloe.
Chloe. And what's your last name?
Chloe Shank.
And you're a student at Westminster?
William Woods.
William Woods. Thank you for being a part of this group.
Thank you.
A motion to accept a proposal.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the request for the Car and Truck Show in Veterans Park without waiving the fee, I guess. But we're just approving the event anyway, so that's part of it. Never mind. Okay. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of allowing the Car and Truck Show, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Thank you.
We'll have a Car and Truck Show. Thank you again for being with us. Let's move on to Card V. Do we have Sandy Kelly with us this evening? Yeah. Looks like we want to take you back tonight.
My name is Sandy Kelly, and I'm on the Board of Directors for Card V. The month of April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so we are planning an event on April 10th in the evening on the courthouse lawn, and we are requesting that Fifth Street between Market and Court be closed. At this point, this is the first time we've done an event like this since I've been on the board, which has been six years. So really have no idea what kind of size of group we will have, and for safety issues, we thought it would be best if we could close this street. I think in the information I sent to Courtney, I said from 6:00 to 10:00, I don't anticipate it actually being that long. I told her, I said, if you all were meeting tomorrow night, I could give you a lot more information, because we're meeting tomorrow to finalize our plans. I really anticipate it probably be more 6:30, 7:00 to 9:00 to close the street.
Good. Any questions for Ms. Kelly? Yes, ma'am.
Is this the same location as the farmer's market?
Correct.
Okay. And are you going to have an event, or just guest speakers, or what are you doing?
We're going to have a guest speaker, and we will have activities for the people that attend the event.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just concerned about if it's from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock, it's that, you know, like four hours with the street being closed down here and with all the construction we've gotten going on, it's very difficult to get around town right now. And I'm concerned that if we close that, you know, a lot of people are getting home from work if they live in, or if they work in Columbia or Jefferson City or something, might be trying to get across this way. If it would be more like 6:30 or 7:00, I think that would be a lot better.
I think it probably will, but I just, when I sent the stuff in, I did not know the exact times, but I really anticipate it probably not before 6:30.
Maybe I should ask this question. How long is Fourth Street going to be closed down here? Kyle's coming up.
By April 10th, we'll at least have the eastbound lane open. Hopefully, we'll have both lanes open at that point, but kind of weather permitting, but I know we'll at least have the eastbound lane open. I think that'll be sufficient enough.
That should help. Okay. Thank you. All right. Very good.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Kelly? Then I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the request for Take Back the Night event on Fifth Street. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Hope you have a successful event. Now, attempt, I turn our attention to the financial reports for the month of February. Who's going to do that?
Bill. Coach Lag is home feeling under the weather. If you have any questions concerning the report, I will do my best to provide you with the information. We're through the, as far as we're through, two months, so the, kind of the percentage along the outside, about 16.6, 16.7 percent is what you'd be looking for.
She doesn't mention sales tax revenue. I know we took January to go back to last year, right?
February does, too.
And actually, I might make a comment on that. Even if we're breaking even, when I was talking earlier last week with a group on the use tax issue, and we consider the amount of sales that we have lost to the internet, the fact that we're staying even with prior years on our sales tax is a pretty good testament to our economy. Most communities see their sales tax really different, so I think that's a real positive for our community. Any other comments or questions on the financial report? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept the financial report.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second to accept the financial report for the month of February. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. Looks like we've done a pretty good job hanging and finishing up our business, so we do not have any unfinished. We'll move on to new business, and Tamara Tatisian is with us this evening from the Chamber of Commerce, and she's going to give us a quarterly update. Thank you for being here.
You did good this time.
All right.
You were practicing.
I'd have to stumble all over.
Okay, I'm going to keep my report brief, but I will entertain any questions you may have when I get finished. We've had a great start to the year so far. We have, year-to-date, 11 new members. Currently, our chamber staff is making retention visits with all of our chamber members, and those are going very well. We've gotten a lot of ideas and suggestions, and they've given us things that they need help with, like building their websites, managing those things, et cetera. So we're taking those into consideration and very seriously to help our members and the businesses in our community. As you know, on Thursday, January 25th, we held our 2018 Annual Banquet at 54 Country. We had a record event with more than 250 people in attendance, and I think it went very well. Everyone seemed to enjoy themselves, and we gave away some great awards to some very deserving people. We had our Women's Networking Group. First meeting was held on February 12th. This group continues to meet quarterly at the Chamber, and every quarter, it's a different topic. So if you know any women that would like to network with other business leaders in the community, and women that may even be stay-at-home moms are even participating, so if you know of anybody, tell them to give me a shout, and we'd love to include them in that circle. We just held our Business Expo and Job Fair on Friday, March 16th, at the Fulton Event Center, which is located in between Napa and Dollar Tree. Sean Edgar let us use his facility, which is a great space and a much-needed space in our community for other events to be held. We had over 30 businesses that set up to showcase their business for business-to-business interaction, and also anyone that was looking for employees, they could also accept job applications. We had more than 100 people attend, and all four school districts were represented this year. So that was very exciting to have all the students there and us be able to showcase some of the jobs we have available in Callaway County. We continue to host our Business Breakfast and Business After Hours monthly, and we would love for you to attend. We have our set schedule, and if you'd like me to email that to you, I can, or I can email it to Courtney, and she can get it to you all. As far as economic development, we just completed the grand opening for Shoe Sensation last Thursday. They had an awesome turnout. When I got there, there was more than 100 people in line to get in the door, and they did great. Mayor was there to help us cut the ribbon. They are looking for a store manager and some other employees, so we're trying to assist them in getting some employees to that store. In a partnership with the CWIB, we just recently received a $341,000 grant to assist us with workforce development for welding positions. Now that we have received the grant, starting next week, we're going to be planning the logistics and hope to have the program up and going by the fall. And this is not just for students in high school, it's also for adults as well. Currently, we are actively working on two very large development projects, one in the healthcare industry and one is just industry. Both could mean some substantial number of jobs to the Fulton area, so this is good, and hopefully we'll have an announcement soon. So looking into the future, we are going to have a legislative update at the Chamber with Senator Riddle and Representative Travis Fitzwater on Friday, April 20th at 9:00 a.m., and I'd like to invite you all to attend. They're just going to give us an update on what has been happening in legislation, and then also we'll kind of have a roundtable discussion of things or issues that, you know, we need help with here in our community. We are preparing for recon, and we will report out when we get back from that event. I think we already have it scheduled for June, so we're planning what materials we're going to take with us, our plans and strategies, because that is a huge conference center. So we're working on that right now. We do have our annual golf tournament that is scheduled for Friday, June 1st, and then we also have our Callaway County Teachers Appreciation Breakfast that will be held on Monday, August 6th, and we're expecting about 400 teachers to that event. And there's one thing that I would like to ask, and that is some support for the Youth 180 program. This is a program that is housed in the Missouri Job Center, and it's for students ages 14 to 24. After visiting with the functional leader at the Missouri Job Center, one of the things he's asking is for businesses to, you know, support and host a Youth 180 in their organization. I think the city of Fulton would be an awesome place for youth to come in and get a backstage pass to learn, you know, the functions of the city. And so I hope that you guys will consider hosting a student here at the city of Fulton. They get 240 hours that they can come in, and you can schedule them as you see fit. Maybe spend a day with Courtney or Mayor or some of the councilmembers and just, you know, educate them on what you all do, and then also maybe, you know, put them to work. That's it. Do you all have any questions?
Is this for Youth 180's high school students only?
It's 14 to 24-year-olds.
Okay. Oh, okay. Solid, Dan.
And, you know, you can even host a student that, you know, maybe helps with lawn care or at the park and picks up trash, you know, you can just, you just kind of, kind of have to have a little job description for them. When we hosted our Youth 180 at the Chamber, she had a job description, things that she did every day when she came in, but then I also had her keep a list of something that she learned new every single day. And she had this notebook of things that she learned about our community and people that she met. She attended one of our Business Breakfasts. She collected everybody's business card, and then I had her send thank-you cards for taking the time to visit with her. And people remember her for just that thank-you card that she sent. And it was a good experience for her to work at the Chamber and see what we do every single day, and she learned a lot.
How long is that period?
240 hours. So, you know, you can spread it out over a period of time, you know, stretch it out six, eight months if you want to.
And is there a cost to sponsor?
No, actually, they pay the students to participate in that program, and they also get some sort of incentives if they do things like attend the job there. Some of them that are registered as Youth 180 received incentives for participating or coming to the Youth 180 booth at the Chamber Expo. So it's a great program, and I have the contact information if anybody's interested outside of the city. I can definitely provide you the contact information for that.
So they can get in touch with you if they're really interested in this program, and you'll give them what they need?
Yeah, the businesses, definitely, and the youth can actually go to the Missouri Job Center, and Cliff Atterbury is the Youth 180 Coordinator there, and he works with the youth.
Very good. Tamara. I enjoyed your report. I know you're working on businesses. How's the Chamber and the whole concept going since you've taken over? It seems quiet.
It seems like it's going very well. I have a good team, and we work very hard every single day to assist the businesses in our community, trying to develop new programs for them to, so they can network and market their business. That's one thing that we hear a lot, is I need to market my business more. Things are going well. Our membership is up, and our retention visits are going well. We learn out there if they're doing, when we're, I say out in the field, doing our retention visits, if they're planning any kind of expansions, if they're having workforce issues, which is something we hear all the time, but we're working on that. We have a workforce task force that's focusing in on that, and so when we're out communicating that to them, then they feel like somebody's at least taken the lead to work on that issue.
Well, I hear from some of my constituents, or a few merchants, not a lot of them, but in between, since you have tourism there, I mean, with you and that, have y'all developed, they feel like we don't advertise our community enough. Have y'all developed cool things there?
Yeah, and tourism is in the Chamber, which is a separate entity of the Chamber. Matter of fact, today, the tourism just received, and I wish I would have brought you all a copy, a new brochure to promote the community, and it's fabulous. We're actually going to take those with us to recon, because there's something that's really light, and it's a beautiful, small program that you can just really hit the highlights of Callaway County and Fulton. So, yeah, we are doing some stuff. Matter of fact, Bruce is touring somebody right now as we speak that is wanting to do some stuff here for tourism, and so he's out in the field doing that right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there, I guess, to turn the magnifying glass around, is there anything that you're hearing that, where the city is hampering anything, or are there any barriers or obstacles that we've created?
Good question.
Not that I can think of right now at this time. Anytime I need any assistance from the city, I usually contact Mayor and Bill, and we work on it and make it happen, so.
Good to hear.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before Tamara runs away, there was one the other year, and I noticed in the paper the other day that this is hindsight, but Westminster was accepting the application for these science tricky kids, and I thought, is there something maybe the Chamber or as a community could go together to promote that for, they did have a few television stations come in, but something we could arrange or a stunt or something into technology like that for more PR?
I don't know. Maybe an opportunity to do that.
Or merchants advertise, if you hear, you can whip their parent through, brings them, they can come and eat, get a discount if they show something to be in there at the seminar.
Okay. Let me think about that.
All right.
Good thought.
Okay. Thank you.
There's not anything else, Tamara? Thank you very much.
All right, see you in June.
You're welcome.
Look forward to it.
Those are pretty exciting programs, particularly the welding positions, because I know that's really needed in the community, and of course, the Youth 180 will help out also. Really appreciate the things that you all have, are spearheading. Thank you very much. Very good. Let's move on with our agenda. We'll move to resolutions and...
Actually, council concerns.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jumped in council concerns. Okay. I wrote all over them.
April, I wanted to skip that one in.
Let's, this is a time set aside for you to bring forward any concern and/or question that is not on the agenda and that you would like to get an answer to, or something you've heard from your constituents. So let's, why don't we start with Mr. Shilin this evening?
I don't have any concerns. I just want to pass on the Atterboys church out here in Southside. in Southside needed some lights put up. I talked to Bill about it, and we're not hearing he agree when he got them up. Church is really happy, because I couldn't even see the intersection tonight.
Very good.
Just passing on some kudos.
Glad to hear, glad to hear that y'all needed it. That's good. Anything else?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. West?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Stone?
Just as a kudo to your glass recycling project, that I know is a big feather in your cap. The recycling, the glass, I'm sure the old Mosers is full and all of it overflowing, so that just shows the commitment from the community to that program.
Community's responding well, thank you, but it's not online. Takes a lot of effort. It's great.
Well, first of all, I've already talked to Chief Myers. If anybody is on Wood Street when school is letting out at Bush School, you cannot get down Wood Street. It just so happened whoever was driving car five appeared and started directing traffic and made it run so much smoother, so I wanted him, Friday whoever was driving car five, pat him on the back, wonderful job. And then, I've already been told about this, as far as the parade route is concerned, can we just make it a permanent one instead of each person having to say, I want to go from here to there, just say, if you're having a parade, this is where you go. Do we already have something in effect like that?
Sort of. Permanent parade route that applies to everyone? I don't think so, no.
It just, to me, would be simpler if, if I'm going to have a parade and I know I can only go the top of Court Street to the bottom of Court Street or whatever, and I don't need to ask anybody, I know this is my limitations. I just thought it was something we could think about.
Very good. I don't think it's a bad idea, well, consider it.
We did try that a few years ago.
Then, at our last meeting, I wanted to clarify something, because it appeared in the newspaper that I was extremely opposed to affordable housing. I'm not opposed to it, I'm opposed to the location. You stop and think, these young kids are going to run across 54 to go to the service station to get their snacks. That's my opposition. If we could locate it someplace else, that's fine with me, that's good. And then, it appears that the new wave is to get a state audit. We have the county, we have SERVE, Columbia, and people, whenever I do the food truck, they're saying, why don't we have one? And I said, we have one every year, but it's from an independent. They're wanting a state audit. So, could you put something in the newspaper about how we do our audits, so they'll keep saying, or quit saying, I want a state audit? And one other thing, and Ms. Kathy's not here, I'm still requesting, to this date, the cost of the smart grid. We had over a million dollars designated for that. Have we spent any more? Have we spent any less? How is that progressing?
Okay.
And that's all I have. And one other thing, I want to thank everybody for putting up with me, tolerating me and my ignorance in this new position, and the new man coming in will be much better, man, woman, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't necessarily know that, Ms. Gray, but it's been delightful.
You're so sweet. You're so politically correct.
You give us things to talk about and think about, Ms. Gray. Mr. Vaughn?
No, I don't have anything.
What about the House thing?
I only have one, and it's real quick, and I should have, I had it marked. On historical preservation, when they said the state made changes to a different zoning, will that come back to the council before you pass?
Are you talking about the districts?
Yes.
Yes, so Lori met with the Historic Preservation Commission, I believe, late last week, and that does have to be passed by ordinance, so you guys will see those, and I'm planning on that coming probably next meeting.
Okay.
So, we'll have those passed by you guys.
So, we'll get advanced to read it for their changes?
It'll actually, it's more of a map that you'll see, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just redefining the zones.
Correct.
Can I get that from you, since I won't be here anymore?
Mr. Schibidecker?
Yes, I actually have something this time. Fourth Street, Westminster Avenue, the light, it's very, very hard to make a left-hand turn there right now because of the construction on Fourth Street. Also, could we put a road closed sign out a little further on Martin Luther King, Route F, whatever you want to call it, so that people aren't in the right-hand lane trying to make a left-hand turn? They don't notice that it's closed until they get right to the intersection. With the blinking yellow light, it's really hard to make a left-hand turn.
I suspect that they're worried about blocking access to businesses, but...
So, we'll change that to flashing red?
Light on ten.
Road closed up, up close, lighter closer?
You do have a lot of people that's in a straight, straight through lane making left-hand turns. I've noticed that myself.
Well, and also at four o'clock in the evening when the city warehouse gets off, and they're coming down Westminster heading south, and people are coming north, there's just no way you can make, I had to wait five lights before I finally got to turn left onto Route F the other night, so, and that's, it just, it's an inconvenience.
Sure. Okay.
But it's all timber.
We'll study it and see what we can do about it.
Could somebody repeat what Kyle said, so for folks at home, it might not hurt you?
That it's a, the Missouri Department of Transportation signal, we'll have to work with them to make any changes. Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad somebody repeated.
I guess I did, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, we'll now move on to resolutions. Resolution 3299 is a resolution that authorizes a contract between the Housing Authority and the city for police service, and Ms. Ann Johnson's with us this evening. Ann, would you like to come forward and address the council? You want to bring Chief with you? Okay, so if, and while they're doing that, Richard, would, Council Vaughn, would you please present 1498?
Resolution number 3299, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with the Housing Authority of the city of Fulton, Missouri, for the provisions of supplemental police service. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3299 at the council meeting tonight.
Thank you. We'll now open it for discussion, and go right ahead. Thank you for being here.
I think this has been an excellent partnership between the city of Fulton police officers and Fulton Housing Authority for the community policing of our property. It's definitely helped to make the property safer. We work together. Lieutenant Ladwig, Officer Kramer, and Officer Kenny are the primary housing officers at this point in time, and between the services, when they're requested by the police officers, they know they have housing support. We work together getting some criminals off the property and taking care of drugs when we know about them promptly. We have a zero tolerance for that, so our tenants and families know that housing is going to be as safe for them as possible. This contract allows for additional services, and in that community policing, it's so the tenants know that the police officers are there for help. We also coordinate and have a monthly meeting during the school system with school officials, family services, probation and parole, people in the community to help support the families that are living in housing. Question?
This is already into effect, you're just asking it to be permanent? Is this going...
We need to, for housing, make sure that we renew the contract on a yearly basis, so it's to continue the contract for another year.
And it's not causing hardship on your department, Chief?
Not at all.
Okay.
No, it really benefits all the city when we can work together closely and remove some of those tenants that are less favorable to our community, and Ms. Johnson works very closely with us and my officers to make sure that the people in housing are productive citizens and are an asset to our community.
As long as it's not a hardship on your department, I think it's a good thing, but I don't want it to deplete your department having special ones, just for that.
It actually helps us.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
Do we still have an officer living on the premises?
Yes, we do.
Cool. Any other questions or comments?
Only because I'm not completely familiar with their scope of work, I did notice in here that there was, you know, state law, local law, all of that, as well as Housing Authority rules. So, is there any of that that kind of, you know, I guess where my mind went was this no smoking rule. So, do we have a police officer that's trying to help enforce that level of Housing Authority rule, or is it more?
If, if it could.
What would they do in terms of a Housing Authority rule?
If it could be one level that it would arise to, whether they had some major issue with a tenant, we would certainly assist them, anything we could, to have them conform to the rule or remove.
I'm thinking more so, sometimes we have tenants who have guests that cause issues on housing property. Police and housing work together on issuing trespasses, keeping them off the property. If those people are seen again, the police officers help us enforce that that trespass is being upheld, those kinds of things.
Okay.
More than a non-smoking issue, they would be more police types of issues that they help us with.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's the, I just didn't understand, so thank you.
Sure.
Ann, how often do y'all remodel those units, paint and whatever?
The updating them, or when tenants move out, they, depending on how hard the tenant has been on them, depends on how much rehab happens to that unit. We have had this last year, unfortunately, several very long-term tenants.
Start saying, how long, how long, how long?
We've had people who lived there over 20 years.
In the same unit?
In the same unit, yes. A couple of these people can no longer stay in their homes, and so have gone to live either in a care facility or closer to family, those kinds of things. The non-smoking has caused us, we have one duplex that's totally gutted right now, we took a clear down to the studs to, because of the smoke that had happened in both sides of that duplex. But we gradually, you know, they get repainted, new flooring, just whatever we have money for to put into them as the next family moves in.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. While we got a chance, we thank you for the job that you're doing, and both of you, and...
We couldn't do it without the officers.
The biggest thing is the communication between the officers and your residents, and I know that through the years, it's been a good thing.
Well, again, it's very beneficial to the city overall. Back in the early 2000s, most of our crime in the city elsewhere came from housing, and we were able to, at that time, start cleaning it up, and Ms. Johnson has certainly helped in respect and supports us as well in getting those people out of the city.
Definitely been a testament to the community policing concept, that's for sure.
And the support that's given to other agencies, you know, my other have with the ambulance board, the, the community policing that's done there and the officers that are there are always a great benefit to ambulance and the fire and anybody else that needs to work in there also.
Ms. Johnson?
Mm-hmm.
The freeze store down there, who pays the utilities and stuff on that? Or is that a part of you?
That is, housing provides the location and utilities for that service for the community.
Okay, thanks. It's very well-used.
It's a definite need.
If there's not any further questions or comments, we'll move on with the question.
Make a motion, we approve?
Actually, I already have a motion.
We actually have that already.
I slept, I'm gonna sleep good.
But, all those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 3299, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay. Yes is having, so we've adopted that one more year, thank you. We'll now move on to ordinances, and we have a second reading ordinance, and that'd be fine to go to three tonight, because I know you'd like to maybe get it over with. Bill Number 1498 is a ordinance that has to change with the way we, the city handles TACCA applications and our vehicles for hire as it goes. So, Council Moore, would you please present Bill Number 1498, second reading, title only?
Bill Number 1498, in order to repeal in Chapter 118, vehicle for hire, the code of the city of Fulton, Missouri, in its entirety, enact a new chapter, 118, vehicles for hire, and move thereof an establishment effective date. I will move this for a third reading at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second. Very good, thank you. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill Number 1498 for third reading. Any further discussion of the motion?
You will no longer have public hearings.
Taxi cabs.
Thumbs up.
All right, Bill Number 14...
Oh, hold on just a moment. We moved on that.
Yeah.
We did.
All those in favor of advancing Bill Number 1498, third reading, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Bill Number 1498's advanced to third reading. Council Moore, would you please present it for third reading?
Bill Number 1498, in order to repeal in Chapter 118, vehicles for hire, the code of the city of Fulton, Missouri, in its entirety, enact a new chapter, 118, vehicles for hire, and move thereof an establishment effective date. I move this for a final passage, tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill Number 1498. Is any further discussion of the motion?
I do have a question.
Sure.
If, if this passes, does this got anything to do with, say, Uber or something like that comes around?
No, so...
Because that's vehicle for hire.
Well, so the state established about a year ago that Uber and Lyft and those ride-sharing services are not technically vehicles for hire, even though we could argue that all day and night. So, municipalities cannot touch services like Uber or Lyft, so this would not apply to that.
They're regulated by the state.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else? Good question, though. Okay, hearing no further discussion on our comments, those in favor of advancing Bill Number 1498 for final consideration, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Yes is having. You've heard Bill Number 1498 presented three times, and it's now time for final consideration. As the clerk reads the roll, please signify your vote by yes or no.
Okay, Ms. Gray? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Schibidecker?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Seven council members, affirmative, one absent.
Okay, very good, thank you. The announcements are here. Just point out that April 3rd is election day, please go to the polls and do your civic duty. The other item I think worth mentioning is the annual clean sweep day, which will happen on April the 21st. And again, those volunteer groups in the, in the city that participate in that event, please contact the Parks and Rec. Is there any other announcements that I'm overlooking?
Shameless plug, Cornus Pancake Day is April 13. I have tickets if you need some.
So, are you starting to count for dollar phone into those shameless plugs?
Sure. I'll put one in.
J.C., when is the, when is the cleanup week, spring cleanup week?
April 30th through 27th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll get that in. Very good.
One, one other question for J.C. Didn't you say that they would pick ever, pick up anything but?
Construction debris.
Construction.
Got a question for you, let's design, I got a couple of doors out back. We consider construction stuff, if you move thrown out there, it's hard for us to handle. So, if it's just a wooden door, they'll grab you, you can go there and take a couch.
Okay.
So, if it's just a wooden door, they'll grab you, you'll be no different than taking a couch.
Very good. Thank you. I do not have a need for executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Very good. We have a motion in second for adjournment. All those in favor, signify saying yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Very nice meeting.